Pastor Jeff Chipwood from the Anchor Christian Church, could you come forward and give us the invocation, please?
Let us pray. Dear God, we come here today and we thank you for the freedom which we share as a nation, as a city, that we can gather together. And I would just ask for your guidance and wisdom be granted upon the council members as they make decisions that impact others' lives. Just always help them do what is right in your eyes. Help us as a people to stand up for what is good. Lord, I pray that you'll be with those in the military, that protect the freedom which we have, that you will watch over them, and that you will bring them back safely. Thank you for all things, and we give you honor and glory. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Councilman Schlaacka, could you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilwoman Schlaacka.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Here.
Councilwoman Gibson.
Here.
Councilman Longcard.
Here.
All right, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Okay, and let's see, we'll go right into public comment. This is public comment on agenda items only. Anyone wishing to speak to anything on the agenda, please come forward.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Fred.
Oh, I should do like the mirror. That was a meek good morning. But Fred Forbes, 28200 Alfred Moore Court. I'm here to speak in favor of appointing Linda Schwartz to be on the Citizens Advisory Committee of MPO. Linda has been very active in the community. She's well-versed in what's going on, and I think more importantly, she would replace someone that's not a resident of Benita Springs. I think that's very important. So that's all I have to say. I would hope you all approve the green sheet item to put her on in place of this gentleman. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm John Calabria with Spanish Wells. I would also like to echo Fred's request to put Linda on board as the Citizens Advisory Representative of the City. I think it's best that we have somebody who represents the city, who lives in the city. That's all I have at this time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Mr. Mayor, Council, and fellow Benetians, Jesse Purdon, District 2. To stay in line with agenda items, I see Fire Chief Joe Daigle's here today, and I wanted to thank him for the stellar job he does for the city of Benita Springs, though he's going to thank you guys for your cooperation with him. And for the good of the order, I would just like to say that I'm actually not here as a citizen today. I'm here representing Congressman Kirk Clausen's office. And I wanted to let everybody know a couple things, two things. Number one, Kirk did get committee assignments, exciting committee assignments that really puts Benita Springs kind of on the map. He got on Foreign Affairs and Homeland Security, exciting stuff. And additionally, we plan on being a very accessible office. And we have an office not only in Cape Coral, but I run the office down in Naples. And I wanted to give the phone numbers and the website out because I know this plays on public access over and over. So if anybody's interested or has any federal issues, please know you can reach out to us, Republican, Democrat, it doesn't matter. If you're in District 19, we'd love to hear from you. We're there all business hours, Monday through Friday. And you can reach us at the Naples office at 252-6225, at the Cape office at 573-5837, and you can get us online at Clausen.house.gov. And we're really proud to be where we're at. Couldn't be there without you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward, any agenda item. Seeing none, we'll close public comment, and we will go to proclamations and presentations. And our first one is a proclamation to the Zonta Club. Would the ladies of the Zonta Club please come forward? Hello.
Hi. Hi. Hello.
And this is, of course, the proclamation celebrating the Zonta Club of Benita Springs. Whereas the Zonta Club of Benita Springs Incorporated was chartered in 1994, and is a not-for-profit organization, and is celebrating their 20th anniversary in the city of Benita Springs on July 25th, my birthday. Anyway, now I'm depressed. Anyway, no, I should be, if I have one, I should be glad, right? Anyway, that was an unnecessary segue. The Zonta Club Worldwide Organization has made a difference since 1919, working nationally and internationally to improve the lives of women through global service and advocacy efforts designed to promote programs to ensure the safety, education, healthcare, and overall economic sufficiency of women throughout the world. And whereas the Zonta Club of Benita Springs is an organization of local business and professional women dedicated to improving the circumstances of women at all stages of life, locally and globally. And whereas Zonta Club of Benita Springs has played an important role in the city of Benita Springs by providing assistance in the many activities and fundraisers within their mission statement. And whereas Zonta Club of Benita Springs has supported the organizations such as the Benita Springs Assistance Office, Partners for Breast Cancer, Habitat for Humanity, Our Mother's Home Act, Shelter for Abused Women and Children, the Salvation Army, and many city and Benita Springs special events. And whereas the Zonta Club of Benita Springs annually recognizes one woman in a special ceremony as the Woman of the Year, this woman portrays the values of mission of the club in both her professional and personal life. And whereas the city of Benita Springs is proud to have such dedicated women in our community who unselfishly give their time, energy, and resources to help those less fortunate. Now therefore, I, Ben Nelson, on behalf of the City Council proclaim July 25th, 2014, as Zonta Day and Ben Nelson's Birthday in the city -- It's not on there. It's not on there. It's not on there. What the heck? In the city of Benita Springs. Thank you all so much. Thank you. Everyone give them a hand.
I just want to take a minute to thank you all so much. This is a small group of women who are extremely dedicated to this community and to the women in this community, and we have really a lot of fun raising money to give out scholarships and grants and be supportive of the organizations that the mayor listed. And we're just really grateful for the recognition, and we've got a big bash next Thursday night where we will share this with the others, and we're just really honored and humbled. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Everyone, please, oh, photograph.
One more, can you do one more?
Thank you very much. Thank you. I'm not saying, other than there's at least 60.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, and this time, we have a representative from the United Way here, I believe, that would like to make a presentation. Come on up.
Hi, good morning. It is a pleasure and a privilege to be here on behalf of United Way and all of our volunteers and donors here in the Lee County and Benita Springs area. This is just a small token of appreciation to show for the support that you have given us. Meg Weiss in HR has coordinated the campaign for the city employees the last several years, and we really appreciate what she's done and the support of leadership for that campaign. I can't tell you, last year was a phenomenal year. Our goal was $8.3 million. We not only made that, we exceeded that goal, and we could not have done that without the help of the city of Benita Springs and its employees. Secondly, the heartfelt comments that I got from your employees, when they reached out to us and said, you know, we're out on the streets every day, especially code enforcement, and they see the residents here in Benita Springs with challenges. They've reached out to one of our partner agencies time after time, the Benita Springs Assistance Office, which is a fantastic partner with United Way and heads up one of our two United Way houses in your community. And without them, we cannot have the success that we do here in our community, helping your residents lift themselves up in times of need, whether it's looking for affordable daycare, maybe folks that are dealing with aging elderly parents needing Alzheimer's support, or just help navigating the new healthcare system. We have those resources available here in our community, and we're very grateful that your employees have looked us to help your residents here. And so on behalf of the United Way and our board, we wish to thank you and the employees for their support this past year, and look forward to another successful campaign this year.
Thank you. And Meg Weiss, would you like to come up here and accept this on behalf of the employees of the city of Benita Springs and ourselves? That'd be great. Thank you so much, everybody. And thank you for all that the United Way does. Everybody, please give them a hand. Okay, and at this time, Chief Daigle, you here? Chief, oh, there he is. Hey, how you doing? Come on up.
Good morning, Council.
Good morning, Chief.
How's everybody doing? I just wanted to say that when I took over the position of Fire Chief, it was my goal was to forge some good relationships through the community and the local government. And I'm happy to say that I believe that I know each one of you personally, and it goes a little bit beyond professionalism on a personal nature. I wanted to create an environment where everyone in the community, specifically the leaders in the community, no matter what their particular opinions are, are comfortable to come into my office and speak with me about fire department issues and fire district issues. And it couldn't happen without the personalities and the people on this board. I also wanted to say that in working in conjunction with the firefighters in this Fourth of July weekend was fantastic. It was the best that I've ever been to myself. Had a little concerns over the fireworks, but went over there and took a look at it, and everything was okay. But I wanted to say thank you and the events that we do here in the city and the dedication that each one of you have shown to the community and to the fire district and what we do and your importance that you place on the life and safety of our community. I can't thank you enough for your help with that, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, Joe, and likewise, we want to thank you for all your professionalism and everything that the firefighters themselves and the union does and that you as a fire board do. Thank you so much for making Benita Springs what it is. Every time I go out there and you do a presentation or something, I am so impressed with the professionalism of the men and women you have serving underneath you. So thank you so much. Thank you.
I wanted to, I did want to mention that we are now a state, Florida State Certified Training Facility, which is a big deal. There's one in Fort Myers, in North Fort Myers, and there's one in Naples, and now we have one in Benita Springs. So we have a public-private partnership with Medical Career Institute, in which we will be putting on fire schools. Now what this does is they pay us a particular portion of their tuition, which covers the cost of actually running the facility and the building of the facility to meet the code. So we will be having a ribbon-cutting, which should be excellent. It'd be a lot of fun. It's exciting to have new recruits here in Benita Springs training, so thank you very much.
You're going to change your logo, too. Benita Springs Fire Department, kind of a big deal. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, and we'll go right on to presentation by Terry Schmidt, the chairman of the Benita Springs Historic Preservation Board. Terry? Oh, there he is.
Good morning. I'm really nervous.
Oh, stop it. You're amongst friends. You can't be nervous. It's not allowed.
You don't bite.
My name is Terry Schmidt. I'm the chairman of the Benita Springs Historic Preservation Board. And I brought a handout for you. I'm not going to sit and read through it, but it's just to outline the benefits of historic preservation, the cultural benefits, the economic benefits, and environmental benefits.
Thank you.
Our board has been working for the last eight years to try to create ways to inform the public, to motivate the public in historic preservation. We've got a lot of old properties here in Benita. We actually have a much larger resource than Naples does, and it's at a point right now where we need to do something to get the public motivated so that we can preserve what we have rather than let these structures continue to decay. Our board has been working on ways to develop tools in order to motivate them, to bring awareness to what we're doing as a board. One of the things that we've done is we've created a plaque, and I'm going to have her hand it. We've given these plaques out to the designated properties that we have here in the city. We have about 19 of them currently. We're also working on a project as part of this plan to motivate people to improve their structures by creating a recognition program. We haven't got all the details worked out on that yet, but our board, like I said, is still working on it, as well as a lot of other different projects. One of the tools that we really need, and in the past, we've sent out mailers to people that qualify as a historic resource here in Benita. Of course, a lot of them aren't registered, and it is a voluntary process to do that, to register their houses. It's not something that we can force people to do. So we're trying to get people to appreciate the property that they have and to improve it. But one of the tools that I think myself is very important is what we used to have here in the city was the grant program, and that was taken away back just before '08. We actually did an outreach for the growth grant program to educate people on the program, what it's about, how to get involved in it, and the resources available. Unfortunately, because of fiscal and financial downfalls with our economy and our society, the day before we had our presentation, the funds for that program were taken from us. So subsequently, we had about 100 people show up for this program, and I had to tell them that there was no money available. So one of the things that I'm here today to ask the City Council to consider when you have your budget meetings is to reconsider revitalizing that program. Before, it was kind of a complicated process. The application was complicated, it was hard to interpret, and it was very lengthy. It took lots of time, in fact. I've had people come to me that actually applied for the program and then never got a response back to it. So one of the things our board wants to do is try to simplify that program, streamline it, make it simpler so that we can get people in, to offer them some type of help to work on their houses, you know. With that, I'm open for any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for Terry?
I have a comment.
Comment, go ahead.
Could you hold the plaque up so that the people at BTV can see how beautiful that is?
I'd be facing this way.
Oh, face, yep, put this way so that they can get a nice close-up on that because I think that's really important. You know, you do get to see a few of those hanging on, some very proud homeowners. You know, you installed them. People were thrilled and proud to have that on their home.
That's correct. When I showed up, we really didn't give them any notice that we were coming. I just knocked on the door, told them who I was, and showed them this plaque, and they were all very elated to have that, to be honored by that. So our board's goal is to have a lot more of these on our properties in the old Benita area, on the old 41 corridor. So what the City Council's doing with the old 41 redevelopment project is great. I live in that neighborhood. I'm seeing the difference in there. But we also have to remember all the residential properties behind that corridor and bring that to life, because this is a resource that, once it's gone, we can't have back. We have to preserve it, we have to protect it, we have to build it. And in turn, it's going to bring in jobs, it's going to bring in growth, and it's going to really help Benita out a lot. We have a sign coming into town, beautiful historic Benita Springs, but yet we don't have a historical district yet. But our board is still working on that, and by educating the public, we're hoping that one day that will soon happen.
Well, Terry, thank you very much. And you see, you did really good. So you don't ever have to be nervous ever again.
Well, I didn't, I really didn't prepare anything to say. I just kind of talked from the top of my head like I usually do, so.
So you're now officially a professional, so thank you very much.
Well, once I get going, I'm better, so thank you.
Nice job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Terry.
Okay, and at this time, oh, this is something fun for Diane.
Yeah, this'll be fun. As you'll recall, at our last meeting, we adopted ordinances 14-16 and 14-17, adopting the Code of Ordinances and the Land Development Code. And we've been working with Municipal Code Corporation, and Stephanie from Municipal Code Corporation is here today, and she's going to give us a brief demo of the search capabilities and that type of thing online. So take it away, Stephanie.
Hello, Stephanie.
Hello, thank you for having me today. Again, my name is Stephanie Rasmussen from Municipal Code, and congratulations on finishing the code. This has been a long time coming. I know it's been a lot of hard work. I'm just going to kind of briefly go through, if everyone kind of focuses on the screen over here. I'm also going to show you a couple other codes that have been online for a while and thus have a little bit more features that you guys quite don't have yet because you haven't done any supplementation yet. But there's also, at any time, the support button over here is going to have little tips and tricks or just kind of an overview of what I'm telling you. This is our brand-new website. It was just launched about two or three weeks ago, so we are still enhancing it and adding things. We're going to fix the top banner so it looks a little bit better, so it's not just going to be kind of boring. So that'll come. But anyway, we're real excited about this, a lot of great features, so I'll just kind of get right to it. This is, of course, normal, like your home screen. So if you ever get lost navigating around, you can always just hit the little home button. Now you have the comprehensive plan and the code, and within the code is also the Land Development Code. So you're able to search all three of these documents at the same time, or you can just search the code, just search the Land Development Code, or just search the comprehensive plan. So that is something that you are able to do. In order to get into the code, you'll just, you can click over here on the left-hand side, or you're able to click on one of these two tabs, and the table of contents will show up, and it's an intuitive table of content, so it'll move with you. So when you're drilling into the code, it'll break down into the sections and the articles, and then you can, of course, just scroll down and search, or, you know, look for what you're looking for. You're always going to have this breadcrumb trail to drill you back in, to get back to the table of content, so that's present with you at any time. We do have a wonderful print, save, email feature. It all works the same. So over here in this actions button, you'll want to get to the section of the code that you're interested in printing, saving, or emailing, and they all work the same, so I'll just kind of do an email real quick. It'll pop up here. And what it'll do is it's going to allow you to checkbox what you want to email, print, or save. The positive signs open up that chapter. So if you wanted to send all of Chapter 6, make sure it's checkbox. If you just wanted to send Article 2, then that's how you would just click it. Down here is where you would just type in the email, and I would always copy yourself on it because these emails are going to be sent from our server, they're not sent from your Outlook. So if you wanted a copy of it, just do a semicolon and copy whoever you're emailing, or you can email it to yourself. This is a great way to send a citizen something, or if a council member, if you guys are on the road and you call and say, email me this chapter, this section really quick, it's really nice. The save feature will save it as a Word document directly to your desktop. So if you're writing an ordinance, attorneys, this is very important, you can just go in and you can save that article directly to your desktop as a Word document, and then you can go in and do your own strike through and underline. And here it is down here. It'll just kind of pop up, and then save it to your desktop. So then you're able to go in and write on it. So it's a great feature. And then, of course, print works the same way. So those features are available for you at any time. Now, once you start adopting new ordinances, we are able to post them online as soon as they're adopted, and this is before they're actually codified into the code. And when that happens, this is what we call Ord Bank. They will be posted here under a button that's called Uncodified Ordinances. So as soon as council officially adopts something, you send it to Municipal Code, we'll post it online within 24 hours. So this is a great way, if you're searching the code, you're able to go online and look at adopted legislation that has not yet been codified into the code. So it's kind of your one-stop shop. You can always go there to find everything. And then, once it is codified, we are able to go in and look and see. The other feature we have, this is something, you know, that's elective, is this where you can see over here, this section says amended. This is, again, before the ordinance is codified into the code. It is here on top of the section allowing citizens and you guys to understand that this section is being amended by this ordinance. So that way, you know, attorneys, this is another wonderful thing. If you're about to rewrite, you know, this section of the code, you know, wait a minute, this section isn't 100% correct, it's not current because this ordinance amends it. So when you go to write a new ordinance, you can take this one into consideration. So that's kind of a good little tool to help you out as well. And then let me show you what we do once it is all the way codified. We will link the ordinance to any reference of it in the code. So if it amends a section, you are able to read that section, and then you can actually click on the ordinance. So a lot of times, you know, Diane probably deals with this mostly, citizens will call and they'll say, that's great, I'm reading this section of the code that says that the fee is $100, but I want to know when they adopted that fee. I remember it being 50. They want to see the actual ordinance. So this is a wonderful way for them to look at the code and trace the history of it through the ordinance that amended that section. So that's a really, really neat feature that we're also very proud about, that, you know, years from now, you're able to go back and look at the evolution of a section of a code. So that's something that we call Ord Bank. Another great tool that we have is called Code Bank. So this, every time you do a supplement, you know, I'm not quite sure how often the city will do it, but, you know, once a year, maybe twice a year, will actually, our legal editors will take the ordinances and they'll codify them into the necessary sections. We are able to archive that previous version of the code. So as of right now, starting from today, you're going to have that 2014 version. When you do your next supplement, we will archive that 2014 version, and maybe it'll be, you know, December 2014 will be the most current version. So you're going to be able to go back a couple years from now and look at that 2014 version and see how the code itself existed online in the HTML format. We're also able to compare those versions against one another. And when you, oops, there you go. So when you do that, you will get a strike through and highlight that'll show you how the code changed. So this is something that, again, is probably very, you know, beneficial, you know, to citizens. I know we get a lot of builders that call us all the time, and they want to know when things changed. So this is a great way to kind of see how the code has evolved again throughout the years. So this is a great tool as well. Now, searching, up here in the top left-hand box is going to be your search feature. Once you actually have ordinances in the Ord Bank, you're able to search the ordinances and the codes together. If you don't want to search the ordinances, uncheck it. If you just want to search ordinances and not the most current code, you know, you just kind of uncheck those boxes. And let's see, this is a pretty good one. Now what'll happen is if you search them both together, it'll tell you if it is an ordinance in the search result or if it's a section of the code. So you're able to tell, you know, that this is, I actually want to look at the ordinance, so I want to look at the code section. And it'll also stay over here with you in the table of contents. So when you're searching through, it'll take you to that section, and every word that was in the search term will be highlighted. Now you'll see I typed in studio art, but it found art. So if you want to narrow your search more, what you can do is you would want to put studio art in quotation marks. What that'll do is just search for those two words together. If you don't put it in quotation marks, it's going to search for studio or art, so you're going to kind of get all of those together. And once you actually drill into the code, it'll stay with you as well, and you can kind of, you know, scroll through and look at all your search results. So this is, you know, again, a great way to kind of search and do things. Let's see if I can get here. Let's see if I can get here. Okay, let me go back to Benita Springs. So again, you have the Comprehensive Plan, the Code, and the Land Development Code. The Land Development Code is Part III, and it's a separate volume, but it's, you know, all underneath the same Table of Content, so you're able to drill in at any time. We will put in a, actually, it is in there, a Code Comparative Table and an Ordinance History Table. These are all going to be at the bottom, the very bottom of the Code. And this will, again, tell you what ordinance number, the date it was adopted, and the section of the Code that it's in. So this is another great research tool. It's also in the printed version of your Code. Anywhere there is a link to a section, you'll get this mouse-over preview. Now, you're able to click on it, and it'll take you directly to that section if you wanted to go to that section, or you can just kind of read the preview and understand about that section that you're looking for. So you'll see those links scattered throughout the Code. Anytime there's an internal cross-reference, there'll be a link with the mouse-over preview. So, you know, again, that's important, you know, if you ever delete a section or change the numbering of a section, that all those links will be changed to that new section moving forward. And then you'll have your Results tab. So anytime you did a search, I did a search in the other Code, it'll save those searches for you here. So if you constantly search for dogs and cats, or leash law, or fees, it'll save all those searches here. And then eventually, you can go back and just kind of click on them until you clear your cookies. If you clear your cookies, then it's going to wipe out all that data. So that's pretty much it. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions? Anyone? Yes, Mike.
So does this work only here, or do we have access over the world?
No, you have access everywhere. This is live. I'm not sure if you've had it updated to your website or not yet.
I don't believe it's been updated to our website, because we have 30-day adoption after our ordinances are adopted. So actually, August 1st is when it actually is supposed to go live on our website.
Will it be linked on our website?
It will be linked on our website.
So there will be a link there?
So what'll happen is, there's two ways you can access it. One is you can go to munico.com, and you can click on the library, go to the state of Florida, you know, navigate down to Benita Springs, and it'll take you there.
And I'm sorry, but by "you," you mean anybody?
User, correct.
Anybody?
Citizen, right. So what we'll do is, I think you should have the link, Diane. If not, I'll send it to her, and then your IT department will place the link on your website whenever you're ready, and it'll take your citizens directly here. They're not going to have to navigate through our site at all. It'll take them directly to your Code. You're also able to load this on your smartphones or iPads. And what that does is it'll directly take you to our mobile site. Now, in the bottom-right-hand corner, we have the mobile site that, for some users, they like to view the mobile site on a desktop, you know, or vice versa. If you want to view, you know, the desktop site on your mobile device, you can do either-or. So you're able to kind of flip back and forth. Same thing, it's intuitive. You know, on the mobile site, you're able, you're going to get the key highlight searching. If you type in a search term, it's going to be highlighted even on your mobile device. And you will have that Code Bank archival version will be there once you've completed your first supplement, and you'll also be able to look at the ordinances. One of the things that a lot of, we get a lot of questions, it's, the ordinances are posted as a PDF. So if you don't have a PDF viewer on your mobile device, you might need to download. It's usually a free app to be able to view those PDF users, but that's, that's a common question that we get. But you'll be able to do that.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much. That's going to be really useful, and probably help us on our website not to have so much stuff on there. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Well done.
And I want to thank Stephanie so much. She came all the way down from Tallahassee just to be here.
Oh, my goodness.
Yes.
Well, Stephanie, thank you very much.
She's kind of gone above and beyond, so thank you so much.
We should make you do more stuff, because this kind of seems too short for that.
Well, you know, again, you guys, this has been a long process. You know, we are honored to be down here, and we're very privileged that you guys share this Code. It's, you know, to be very proud of it, and we've put a lot of work into it. You guys do a lot of work.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, and I think that's it for Presentations and Proclamations. We are to the Consent Agenda Council. We have A through E. Is there anything that you would like to remove from the Consent Agenda for consideration?
Who to approve?
We have motion to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hello?
Hi, just on Item A, I just want to make a correction. There was just a minor. It referred to Imperial River, where it should be Spring Creek. I'm just going to make that modification.
Okay, good, good. So the, so the motion and the second will be as amendment, corrected, amended. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slackta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longcar?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
And at this time, we have a public comment as yet again. And this is, can be on any subject, city subject. Anyone wishing to say something in regards to the city, come forward.
Good morning, everyone. For the record, Kathy McGrath. Two weeks ago, when we were talking about the study at Benita Beach Road and all, I made a comment. And at the time, I said I was totally against the flyover, that I didn't trust the feds, and I still am by that, stand by that. However, I had felt before, and now I've changed my mind again, my prerogative, I do want the study to go on. And I want to point out people power. One of it is the Coconut Road Interchange. 1988 was in the comp plan. Everyone knew it was going to be there. Everyone who bought there, not only Lighthouse Bay, but everyone, knew it. It was in their covenant. But of course, once they got there, they didn't want it. And they had a strong ally in former Commissioner Ray Judah, because he did not want the property east to be developed. Well, in 2005, Don Young, and everyone will remember him from Alaska, he was very controversial, because he had, was trying to put a $223 million, I think they call it the bridge or the road to nowhere up in his state. He was down here meeting, and he was asked to do a study. Well, every single paper that printed it didn't have the truth. He was blamed, because they said developers had paid into his contribution fund. But the truth is, Bill Merwin, FGCU president, who got FGCU started, making it into what it is today, he's the one that recommended it. He wanted it to have evacuation for his dorms and to have better traffic flow. So that is why, before it went to the president, they pulled out $10 million from the widening of I-75 for the interchange. And if you think this flyover thing is controversial, you should have been here in '08. I mean, I have a file full of things. Only one reporter, a Gannett reporter, and I'll probably butcher his name, Yun Kyung Kim. I think it's probably Korean, from Gannett. He told the truth about the meeting with Irwin requesting this. Well, anyway, we all know what happened. The power of the people, this is an interstate, a federal interstate. The land is vacated. We'll never have an interchange there. And I think it was wrong, because Coconut Point Mall and FGCU. But I'm just pointing out, power of the people. Breath. The next thing is US 41 and Benita Beach Road. How many of you were here when it opened? There was no traffic signal there. In their infinite wisdom, they had a four-way stop sign. We had deaths, and we had one gutsy lady in a wheelchair. I don't know her name. Was it Hazel or Helen something, who sat out there in that intersection? Power of the people. Now, I have no delusions or illusions, I'm not talking to anybody sitting up there about your vote, but I intend to contact every person on the MPO and urge them to continue the study. This is a study. It'll take a couple of years, and nothing's going to be done until 2035 or later. Budget it. People say, "Well, then why waste the money now?" Well, we know how the feds are. They're just going to spread out our money, and if they run out, they'll just print some more, or they'll just go to the Chinese and get some. But anyhow, that is my feeling. I feel the study should go on. And I'm not saying this for you. I'm saying this to everybody watching. No matter how you feel about this, contact the MPO, every member. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Wish to come forward, please, do so.
Yes, my name is John Calabria, and I'm a member of the Benita Citizens for Good Government. After the July 2nd council meeting, we took an opportunity to read the city's Code of Conduct. We agree with the council members who spoke out and said that our city representatives violated the Code of Conduct. So therefore, we wish the council members to vote to permanently replace these members with two other members who will go along with the wishes and represent the wishes, not only of the city council, but the citizens of Benita Springs. At the next council meeting, we recommend that the council take up the consideration of sanctions. Okay. I recall a meeting whereby the mayor and the council sanctioned council member Simons. And that is something that also should be considered. But at the very least, we should replace the current MPO members with new ones who will vote in accordance and act in accordance with the city council's wishes and the residents' wishes.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comment at this time, and we are to the, let's see, First Reading and Public Hearing and Following Ordinances. Audrey.
Thank you. The First Reading of the Following Ordinance, it's an ordinance of the City of Benita Springs, considering the petition of Benita Springs Utilities Incorporated to revise the water tariff and wastewater tariff consistent with the franchise in Benita Springs Ordinance Number 02-14 and providing for an effective date. This is the First Reading. The Second Reading and Public Hearing will be scheduled for August 6, 2014. I have reviewed the affidavit of publication. It is legally sufficient. At the August 6 meeting, that will be when you will review the petition in accordance with the ordinance. None of these changes dealt with financial, as far as changing the tariff rates or wastewater rates. It was strictly changes in the tariff to make it more operational.
Okay. Counsel, what is your pleasure?
I'd like to make the motion to move it to Second Reading.
We have a motion to move it to Second Reading, and there's a second? Any discussion?
I have some questions on the, I noticed in a couple spots, there was a, the rate, it said, "Subject to change from time to time upon approval of the city council." In a few spots, that was stricken from the new copy. I was wondering why.
Could you direct me to which page?
It happened in a few places. One of the pages is 16, looking at the, the copy that's marked up. Actually, I think it's the back 16. It seems like there's two 16s.
There is. You have Exhibit A, which is the clean copy, and Exhibit B, which is the one that was modified, or shows all the changes. So if we use the markup, that would be wonderful. And the point that you're...
I don't know, mine's out of order, but I have a page 19 ahead of that, where it's also stricken.
Okay, and I'm in the document with Diane. Is my 16 and your?
I see what you're saying, Michael.
Let's see, my 16 has a different...
There are parts that it's still in there, but there was...
Right, and I think, oh, because we're looking at a water tariff and a wastewater tariff. I apologize. So on the wastewater tariff, it was stricken out. And I think those are questions that, are questions I need to ask BSU, as to why. I did send this for staff comments, as well as to counsel, and it's my first comment.
Okay, and we have Representative from BSU, Don, or Don or Fred, can you address that particular issue at this time?
Right, they were planning to do their presentation August 6.
Right.
Okay.
Don Thompson with Henderson Franklin, representing Benita Springs Utilities. I'm not sure what the question is to address it. I do know this, if there's an issue with respect to the city council approving rates, that's clearly in the franchise, and that doesn't change at all, if that's what the question is. The tariff is an exhibit to the franchise. And there are no intents to make any changes with respect to rates or charges or any of that sort of thing with respect to this. We're just doing exactly what Audrey had indicated, if that's what the question is. If I could get directed and maybe respond between now and the next reading, I'm not sure otherwise what the question is.
If you, if we could, Audrey, if you could go ahead and highlight those areas in which Mike's referring to, and get it to Don, and then they can go ahead and respond on why that's something that needs to be stricken. And then you can bring it back to the next time. Mike, is that okay?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
And if you have any additional changes, I'll be happy to sit with you. I have one meeting with Councilman Simmons afterwards, but then afterwards?
Yeah, and I would encourage any councilperson, if you, if you run into a question or something like that, go ahead and get it to Audrey as quickly as you can. That way, she can be prepared at the meeting to go ahead and address that question, and she's not having to search through this stuff, okay?
And the same with us. We'd be happy to hear any questions. That way, we can be prepared to not take up too much of your time.
That's a good idea, too, and to go ahead and share those questions with Benita Springs Utility, so they can be prepared to address it, because it may be something they overlooked as well, so.
Correct.
That's very good. Okay?
Thank you.
Good, thank you very much. Anything else before we move this to a Second Reading? No? Roll call, please.
Councilman Slackta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longcar?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Okay, Second Reading and Public Hearing and Following Ordinances, and public comment is allowed on these. Thank you.
Absolutely. And I'll read the title block of the First Ordinance. This is an ordinance of the City of Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, extending the territorial limits of the City of Benita Springs, Florida by the annexation of unincorporated tracts of land within the Huron Cove neighborhood of Pelican Landing, lying contiguous to and being in the same county as the City of Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, located in Section 9, Township 47 South, Range 25 East, assignment to City Council District 1, and providing for an effective date. This is the Second Reading. I've reviewed the affidavit of publication, and it is legally sufficient. This ordinance was the catch-all. There were some property owners that we found that should have been in, that weren't in the prior Huron Cove ordinance.
Yes, but they, but they were included in the original documents.
Absolutely. They all signed well before March 1.
Okay. And at this time, let's go ahead and go to public comment. Any member of the public wishing to speak to this matter, please come forward. Seeing none, Counsel, what's your pleasure? Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longcar?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slackta?
Aye.
Okay, Item B.
This is an ordinance of the City of Benita Springs, Florida, creating the Personnel Policy Ordinance of the City of Benita Springs, providing for severability, conflicts of law, inclusion in Code, codification in Scrivener's Errors, and effective date. This is the Second Reading. I've reviewed the affidavit of publication. It is legally sufficient. Meg Weiss, our Human Resource Manager, is here. If you have any questions pertaining to this particular Code.
Counsel, any questions before we go to public comment? All right, at this moment, time, we'll go to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak to this matter, please come forward. Seeing none, Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longcar?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slackta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Okay, Audrey, what else do you have for us?
Okay, this is an ordinance of the City of Benita Springs, Florida, adopting portions of the Administrative Regulations Guide, adopting Section 3.04 relating to harassment, Section 6 relating to employment, Section 7.01 relating to the Classification Plan, Section 7.02 relating to the Compensation Pay Plan, and Section 8.02 relating to force reduction and recalls, amending Section 10.02, previously adopted by Ordinance Number 13-19, related to paid time off, Section 11.02 related to educational assistance, Section 12 related to correctional, corrective actions, disciplinary procedures, providing for severability, conflicts of law, Scrivener's Errors, and effective date. This is Second Reading. I've reviewed the affidavit of publication. It's on with the other ordinance, and it is legally sufficient. Meg Weiss is here, if you have any questions.
Okay. Meg, do you have anything to offer before that? No? Any questions for Meg? No? And we have public comment on this as well, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any member of the public wishing to speak to this matter, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go and close public comment. And Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Move to adopt.
Move to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longcar?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slackta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Audrey, you have anything else for us?
No, sir.
Okay, and we're going to switch to the city attorney's report, and I'll ask you again, do you have anything else for us?
Not at this time. I know I have worked at the last council meeting. There was discussion. And I have had communications with Mr. Rooney, the MPO attorney. I do plan to have things prepared for August 6.
Okay, well, and welcome back, and I hope you seem so relaxed.
Thank you.
What is that like?
Nice to have a vacation.
Is it really?
Yes.
Weird. Okay, thank you. Weird. Okay, thank you very much, and we look forward to working with you as usual. City managers' report. Don't see him, but I see the acting city manager.
There you go. In your packet, you've got the financial report ending May 31st. There are no anomalies that show up in this report. Still reflects a very healthy financial situation for the city. But Lisa's obviously here and available if you have any particular questions.
Any questions for Lisa? Any, anything? No? Okay, good. Thank you very much. Well done, Lisa.
I do have, I do have some other reminders. I'll take the opportunity now, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
A couple of things to bring you up to date on. The beach renourishment project, that you're all probably aware, is actively underway right now. They are operating 24/7, around the clock, moving sand onto the beach and then spreading it, contouring it pursuant to the permit. They'll be moving south through the beach profile. They still estimate completion about the first week in August, and at that point, they'll be packing up and moving on to Lover's Key. We haven't had any direct contact from any residents with complaints, although obviously the county natural resources folks are the initial project managers on that, and they've been doing a great job of outreach and keeping the residents informed of what they're doing as the project moves on. So we'll keep you posted if anything unusual comes up, but right now, it's full speed ahead.
Okay.
The library project, we still expect to get an update from the county's consultant towards the end of the summer. I did want to point out, though, that the technology advisory board met and discussed this project at their last meeting. They are in the process of articulating some specific questions that they have that they want to make sure the consultant is addressing. Once we have that in writing, I'll be getting with the liaison, Dr. McIntosh, to go through the articulated list of concerns, and then communicating with county staff to make sure that they're addressed as, if possible, as part of the process. So I just want to let you know that one of your volunteer boards is at least keeping this on their radar and trying to delve down a little bit deeper to make sure that some of the more peripheral tangential questions are addressed, if possible. The third thing I wanted to point out is that earlier in the agenda, you approved the city's adoption of the county's comprehensive emergency management plan. You should all have gotten by now a copy of our emergency management plan. It's kind of an overview, a roadmap for how we handle particular types of situations here in the city, and I just wanted to remind you that if you have any questions about expectations, your roles, or what we hopefully won't have to do at any point, just let us know, we'll try to walk you through it. But it's served us well in the past, and we expect it will again. The fourth thing I wanted to bring up was, and this goes back to the presentation that was given on the Muni Code, and this is just from Carl and I's point of view on this process. This was a very labor-intensive process to get to the point where we have this new product online. Our thanks go out to Diane and her crew especially, Audrey, some of the other folks that were involved over community development, going literally page by page through an incredible number of documents to make sure that it's all accurate and correct. Now it switches over to Laura and our IT folks to make sure that it functions properly online for the residents. But it really is a giant leap forward in terms of transparency and being able to get our documents out there and available and searchable for the public. So our thanks again to everybody that was involved in that process. The last reminder I have is not quite as happy. The unpaved private roads project, which we had really hoped to have up and running in June, we do have the contractor involved, he has his subcontractors in line, but there has been a delay because of coordination between some of the subcontractors, I didn't want this to be a surprise to council. But they will not actually be beginning on the first road, which will be down street. They won't be starting that until August 1. We've reached out to our point people, we've reached out to the residents, they understand the delay. It's not ideal, it's not what we would have wanted, but we still expect that the project will be done, it will be a good one, and it will be a huge benefit, albeit a little bit later than we had hoped for.
Okay. Anything else? Any questions for John? Yes, Steve?
Just real quickly, on the road paving, have we run into any issues where you couldn't get the complete agreement of the residents? And how widespread is that?
Yeah, this phase, this second phase, second year of the project, we actually started out with about eight different streets, and we, in the final analysis, we were only able to go ahead and do the paving on four out of the eight because of either reluctance or delay on the part of the property owners to give us the necessary license agreements to let us work on their private property and/or payment. That doesn't mean that that's the end of the story, though. One of the things we'll be talking to you about at the July workshop, which is actually my last reminder, budget workshop, is that in next year's budget, we have an effort designed to go out to look at all of the remaining unpaved private roads, including the ones that we've reached out for in the past where we weren't able to get cooperation. We're going to do it again. We'll go out and see if, based on the fact that we have a number of those done, we can actually show them a finished product, maybe that'll be enough to get some more cooperation going forward.
Thank you.
Okay.
And thank you for reminding me, you did get the financial statement. Just a reminder that July the 28th is your, Monday is your budget workshop. We have the whole day blocked out for that. We're looking forward to it, we hope you are also.
Oh, yay. Yep. Okay, thank you very much.
Let us know if you have any questions ahead of time, if we can do any research or help you all to speed up the process on Monday, we'd be more than happy to.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Everyone, be sure and avail yourselves of our wonderful staff if you have any questions. Okay, and John, that's all? That's all you got? Any more questions for John? Nope, seeing none. We are to mayor and councilmember items and report. And discussion appointment of Benita Springs resident to the Citizens Advisory Committee, Councilman Simons.
Simpson.
Simpson. Why does it say that? Why can't I read that?
Is it Simons or Simpson?
I don't know. It's neither.
Linda Schwartz had contacted me, I think many of you know her, she's been very active. Sorry about that. She, Linda Schwartz had contacted me, I think a lot of you folks know her, she's an active member of this community and lives in Cedar Creek. She's had some surgery recently, so unfortunately, she's not able to be here. She asked if I would make a green sheet here for her as she wants to serve on this committee, so absolutely, I wholeheartedly endorse the idea, so.
Okay. Counsel, you have any questions?
Yeah, I have some questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
I guess she approached you on this?
She did.
And asked you to be on CAC?
She did.
And did she say why particularly?
She just said she wanted to be on the committee. She wanted somebody that was a member of, a resident of Benita Springs to serve on the committee, and I said, "Okay."
And who are you going to replace?
The gentleman from Fort Myers.
Ted Tryka?
Ted Tryka?
Who is, what, what does Ted do for a living?
He's a highway engineer.
And I guess really, I look at this as if we can have a resident serve on this committee, you know, I would always prefer that.
So you want to remove Mr. Tryka?
If that's what this means, certainly nothing against him, but when a citizen steps forward and wants to serve, I'm happy to move this forward.
Have you checked Mr. Tryka's performance on the CAC?
I've seen, you know, I haven't heard anything positive or negative about him, quite frankly. But I do know that he's not a resident, and that's what this is.
Yeah, and John?
Just in terms of general context, obviously, it's up to the council what they, how they want to proceed on this, but just, I feel like I need to point out that typically, on all of our volunteer committees, what we do is, through the clerk's office, we keep a running list of interested parties, so she has an inventory, basically. When a vacancy occurs, we either advertise that vacancy or bring to, back to council if we have a, you know, a stable of resumes in there and applications in there, we'll bring those forward for your appointment. But typically, at least in the past, we haven't taken any proactive measures unless and until there's a vacancy. In this case, we don't have a vacancy, so you, it would be a two-stage process. One is removing an existing person and then pointing a second, so.
I have to point something out, I'm going to turn it over to Audrey here just to kind of reaffirm.
I'm not quite done.
Oh, I apologize.
That's all right. Okay, is that your point?
Yep.
Okay. I got to ask, do you, Peter, do you know how many other non-residents we have on committees?
I know there's others, but when a resident steps forward, Steve, I'm in favor of moving that forward as well.
Well, the city processes specifically allow people, non-residents, to serve on advisory boards and committees for several reasons, and a couple of them are. First of all, we're trying to find the most professional and expertise we can have on those committees because it affects the life in the city. And not, that's not against Linda Schwartz, but it's clearly against, Ted Tryka's done a good job. The other point is, the decisions that are made here in the city don't affect just the city. It's a regional decision on transportation, particularly on CAC. So if I'm concerned about taking a step that really sets us back from the professional expertise we've had on committees, if you approve something like this, then bring it forward, frankly. So if it's, if, it's not about Ted and it's not about Linda, it's about a continuing effort to subvert city processes here. And I think it's, it's inappropriate, and I think it's unnecessary and unprofessional. It's disrespectful to people who's stepped up and said, "I'm going to do a good job for you," and have done a good job for us. So I don't think it's the right way to handle this. If you want to get to the CAC and change the way that they're going to, the MPO is expected to vote, and by replacing people, then that's inappropriate, and frankly, I think it's unethical.
If I could, I think there's a little bit of confusion, I believe, in what this is. First of all, the CAC is not an advisory committee to the city. It, the CAC is an advisory committee to the MPO. The, the CAC members are not appointed by the cities or the city councils. The CAC advisory members are, are appointed and serve at the pleasure of the members, he or she, they refer to he or she as the MPO member. So it's your MPO representative, right, that gets put on there, that appoints that CAC member. And what they do, they nominate the CAC member to the MPO, and then the MPO votes to put that particular CAC member on there. Now, in the past, what I have always done, I have come to council, I thought properly so, to say, "Look, here, we have a CAC opening, I'm going to tell you what I'm going to do, or is everybody okay with that?" And everybody would say, "Yeah, well, we're okay with that." And I would say, "It's, you know, Ted Tryka, and he does this, and he does that, and this is where..." Everybody was fine with it. Everybody was fine with it. Now, although the bylaws of the CAC will say, will say in there that, that, you know, that the citizen, or the citizen that you appoint, that the member, whoever that is, appoints, is supposed to be a resident of the city, it's not mandatory. If you, if you don't find somebody that meets the criteria that you're looking for, you are allowed to point outside of your city. You're allowed to do that. Now, that may not bode well for the rest of the people in the city. That doesn't mean that anybody who walks up from the city of Benita Springs and says, "I want to do it," is somebody that you want to, and like I said, I said, "Nothing to do with Linda or anything else." I, I suggested, and I suggested to the MPO that they put Ted on there, I suggested that they had put Dan Wagner on there. I'm happy with Dan's service. I'm happy with Ted's service. The reason that Ted and that Dave McKee, another engineer, before him, who lived in Estero, he served well. Dave McKee served for several years on the CAC, and he lived in Estero. But you all know Dave McKee, he's, you know, he spends a lot of time in Benita Springs, he's involved in Benita Springs. Ted's the same way. He spends a lot of time in this region right now. He's very knowledgeable. I was looking for someone very knowledgeable, somebody who's a critical thinker, someone who is ethical, someone who has been here for quite some time in this, in the community, someone who is familiar with the needs of the area. And that, that was my personal criteria for it. I would only ask that if you would like to have somebody in Benita Springs on that, is that you don't embarrass this guy professionally, this person professionally and personally by removing him. I think that, I think that that sends a bad message. I would suggest that when the time comes, when that, his tenure is over, because, I mean, I mean, the CAC, after all, they make recommendations. The MPO, quite often, I mean, more times than none, just checks it off and goes, "Yeah, that's fine, but we're going to, we're going to thank you for your advice, but we're going to do this." The CAC and TAC recommendations and everything are brought to the MPO, and the MPO looks at all of them, and they, they make a decision. And quite often, the TAC's recommendations and the MPO, and the CAC's recommendations are a little different, and we always have to juggle the two of those, so. That's the only thing that, that really disturbs me, is that, number one, it's not exact, it's not a council decision. And no offense, I mean, it's something that, that when there's a change, I would ask council advice on, just, just as a courtesy. Or I think that any MPO member, anybody who's served on the MPO would probably do the same thing. But at the same time, I would, I would ask that you allow this person, he's a good, he's a good person, he's a good solid thinker, I would ask that you let him, or I would, I would be content to allow him to serve his tenure out.
Ben, may I please?
Yes, sir.
Please. I don't think that Peter was trying to imply that Mr. Treva is any way, in any way not qualified to be on the committee. I think it was a request, a genuine request from somebody that lives in Benita Springs that wanted to be on a committee because obviously she must have some interest in, for some reasons or reasons. And all that was, that Peter was bringing it forward, I don't know that he should be chastised for suggesting someone from the city that has an interest should be put upon in terms of, and not to diminish the contributions of the man that's already on there, but I don't think there was any intent on Peter's part to circumvent the system, if you will. But that's not, that's not at all. He's, she lives in Cedar Creek, which is in his district. I happen to have Dan Wagner, who serves on the CAC, who is the other representative there. So I would, I hope you would take that into consideration, Steve, that he, there was no intention to be, try to, try to pull something over on anybody. It wasn't that at all. It was a genuine approach, and I respect what Peter did. Thank you.
Yeah, and I don't, and I don't think, I didn't read any accusation of intent. I think it was just, as a result of the request, that might be something. That may be an unintended consequences of the request, is that that person may feel it, may send that signal.
And also, she, she also, I mean, I have a copy, we all have a copy of her resume and everything else, so it's a qualified person in many respects, and it's, there was no, no, I have, I know of any reason that, that if the process is not being done correctly, or we don't, as you suggested, Ben, you know, we can work through this, but I do think that her name should go on the list, at least. And when is the, when is the term up?
Yeah, that's a good question. I don't know when that term is up. I, I, I would, I would assume, well, I don't know. I think that's something we need to look into. And that, that I would agree, that, that those people that want to serve on those particular, I mean, this is the way it kind of works with these appointees, you know, as well as I do. Everybody wants to serve on a committee until the time you're looking for somebody to serve on a committee, and then you're like, "Ah, I can't find anybody." And that's the way it usually goes. And so, do you know right offhand?
No, I'm in the statute, and as well as, thank you, Councilman Member Simmons, for putting in the bylaws, because that helped me also. There is no time, you know, it's just very clear that it's the MPO, MPO who does the appointment. It's not council, or an individual council person.
Well...
Yeah, but the recommendation comes from the two, obviously Ben and Steve are on the committee, so if they, if, they would have to bring that forward. That's the way I understand it. It's been explained.
That would be correct. There's also two other issues. One is, I, and I apologize, I, this is my first time looking at this, so it did get me a little cold. Two other things. One is, we do have an administrative code, but that does apply to our advisory codes, so I don't think that's applicable. But then we do have language in our charter as to appointment, that it's the mayor who does all appointments and consultation with councils. So I would presume that your request is for him to make a modification in council, in your consultation.
That's what, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, Bill, I, I would, I would kind of argue that that would be in reference to city, city committee appointments. And this, this clearly isn't a city committee appointment. This is an MPO appointment. This is, this is, this is an entity, the MPO requests that, that citizens are put on there, and they request that the members, the individual voting members, the 16 members, make suggestions on who that should be. And so, Steve, whoever is on there, it wouldn't matter, it wouldn't be me as the mayor, if, if Mike and Peter were the MPO representatives, when the time came to make those reappointments, they would have the option of putting somebody, making the suggestion to the MPO who they wanted to see on there, with or without consultation with the council. That's the way I read this, Ben.
And I believe that the, the MPO has a process similar to the one I described that we use here, where people who are interested in serving would, can complete an application that they have, it's submitted not to us, it's submitted to the MPO. And then when a term comes up for appointment, those applications are forwarded to the person who represents that municipality or whatever, where the vacancy is. So there is a process in place for people who want to serve, but again, that, that process goes through the MPO.
And in general, the, I want, for what it's worth, in general, the MPO struggles to, to fill a lot of these seats, because, especially at the, at the county level, I mean, because, you know, each, each county commissioner has an appointee that they, they try to come up with. A lot of times, they can't find one within their district, and then, so they kind of cast a wide net, "Does anybody know anybody that, you know?" So it's, it's, it is one of those rather thankless jobs, you know, especially, it can be especially frustrating, because all the work that you do, it's kind of being like being on the LPA or the, or the zoning board of adjustments. It goes to, to the city council or the MPO, and they go, "Yeah, thank you very much, but no, we're not going to do that." That can be kind of frustrating, so. Anyway, that, that's, that's it. I mean, I, I don't know that, I, I think it would be nice to find out when this person's tenure is up. I, I think that that's, would be the, that would be in consideration of that person's professional and personal feelings on the thing, and when his, and when his time, or time is up on that, it would be nice to know that, so that we could do it without firing him, for even, even for the fact that, you know, we'd rather have somebody from a different area. So I don't know. That, that's just, that's mine, two bits. Go ahead.
Okay. I had the two questions. One was obviously on the term limit also, but if we went ahead and approved this, it doesn't mean that the MPO will naturally approve it, correct?
Yeah, I mean, if, if your suggestion is to, to encourage, I, I don't even know how you would do this, is that you would send a message, you would say, "We would like to encourage the, the MPO representatives to, to remove the current Ted Tryka, one of, one of your MPO representatives to remove Ted Tryka and to, and, and to suggest to the MPO that they replace him." I guess that would be, I, I guess that would be it. And I would, I think we need to figure out how that should be worded and what the realities of it are. I'm a little confused on that.
Well, the, the, the other part of it, I'm sorry. You know, I, I think John said it best, it's just like, you know, any other committee, that we, we treat people, you know, put them on a list, get them ready for the next term and whatever. I don't have anything against Linda Schwartz, I don't have anything against the other person either, but I just think that, you know, it would be like me coming in and recommending, "I remove Bobby Hunter from the Veterans Advisory Committee," and I, I don't think that would be a smart thing to do, because he carries a gun, but...
[laughter]
But anyway, I, I just think the process is pretty clear. I think the way we appoint people to committees, and I would kind of say, "Let's, let's put her on the list."
Okay, yes, Janet, I'm sorry.
Thank you. The one comment that I'd like to make is that I don't even know Mr. Tryka. I, you know, and you mentioned Dave McKee. We all knew Dave McKee. It's like we have these, you know, interactions with him, and I don't even know, know this gentleman. No doubt, he's probably doing an okay job, but I also believe in process. So for me, I'd like to see that if we are thinking about filling a vacancy, then I'd like to see who else in the community might, who lives here, if we're going to go with that idea that we would like to make a recommendation that they be a resident, I'd like to see who else. No doubt, Ms. Schwartz is, is qualified, but we have a large community here with very talented individuals, so I'd like to see a, a list come in, and then at that point, when Mr. Tryka's term is up, then we would make a decision as to who we might recommend to the MPO for that seat. I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, I would, I would think, my, personally, I think that that's the more proper way to do it, regardless of who your MPO representative is, you know, to, to make that suggestion to them, if, you know, request that they first, when that comes up, that opportunity to a replacement, come back, to bring it back, so that there can be a discussion, and for those other people to be discussed about that. So, I don't know. That seems like the way to do it. Anyway, but what, what do you think?
Well, I mean, you know, you stand, like, somebody had pointed out, appreciate all your opinions, you know, sometimes you have a plethora, sometimes you have a lack of people that want to serve. And where I've known Linda for several years, I've seen her involvement, and she stepped up to want to serve, I'm duty-bound and feel right with bringing this forward. It's nothing more, nothing less than that.
Yeah, and it's, I don't think anybody faults you for bringing it forward. I think it comes down to what now? What, what would you, is, is, is council content to, to wait until this gentleman's term is over and then, then suggest a replacement, or a different, or then weigh the options at that time? Or are, are we going to make a motion to remove the gentleman and replace him? Which one are you going to do?
Well, I, you know, Linda wants to stand up and serve, and I, you know, I am going to move forward with this, and I, I've seen her, I've seen her work, I think a lot of us have. She's dedicated to the community, and she wants to serve, and I'd like to move forward.
So, so are you making, so you're making the motion to remove Mr. Tryka? Am I saying that name right?
Yes.
Tryka.
I have a problem with that name. Not personally, just saying it. Mr. Tryka, from that position and to, and to appoint, or to request that the MPO appoint Linda, Linda.
Are there alternates?
No.
No, there's no alternates on the CAC or the, the CAC.
Ben, can I say something?
Yes, Bill. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's a second. Yes, sir.
Discussion. Has Mr. Treba, I don't, I have no idea, has he been in correspondence with anybody on the, because I haven't...
I called him and apprised him of the situation.
And what, could you share with us?
Uh, he's, he, he, he said that he was proud of his service on there, he's proud to serve and continue serving on there, and that if someone wants to remove him off there, well, if, or if I, if the person who put him on there doesn't want him on there, he'd be glad, you know, "Fine, take me off." But that, that's it. He's, he's...
Okay. But you did speak to him.
I did speak to him. He is aware of the situation.
Did you have a chance?
I have spoken to him independently of the mayor. I didn't know the mayor had contacted him.
I did call him just to give him a heads up that this issue was coming up, and not to be embarrassed, that he'd done a good job. So whatever happens, happens. I happen to think that we should not do it, but that's...
Okay, well, that, that's important, that, you know, I, I agree that you should not slice it without giving the opportunity to share with them, because obviously, I've never, I mean, I can remember years ago, he was here on a, he's a traffic guy, I guess, to do with roads.
Yeah, he is.
And, yeah, so he's done some work for the city. Okay. I second the motion.
There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Yeah.
Yes, Mike?
I too would like to see a resident of Bonita to be on the citizen advisory committee. But I think we should follow the correct procedures on doing that. If we could send a letter, you know, telling him that we have somebody else that would like to do it, and if he would like to step down, you know, not physically, you know, say, "Hey, you know, we want to remove you, but it's up to you," you know, knowing that you're not from Bonita, we have somebody that would like to serve in your place, and leave it up to him.
Yeah, and, and that's exactly the way I had put it to him. I said, "Look, I don't want to put you through any trauma here," although that has been kind of the name of the game here for a while. "I don't want to put you through any trauma," you know, and if, and he, and he did. He says, "Look, I, I, I enjoy my service there, I think I have a lot to offer, you know, and I'll stay there until you, until I'm taken off." And so that, that was his, and there was no stubbornness in that, it was just a sense of his professional and personal, personal pride that he'd done a good job, and that he cares about the region.
Can I, can I say, ask the, ask the clerk, the, and, do you have anybody on this that's interested in that besides Linda that has?
I have not received any applications or any interest.
In the last two years, three years?
No.
Nothing?
That would go to the MPO.
Well, act, but actually, I mean, when, when that came open, there were, there were several other people that, that had expressed they wanted to be on some committee, but when, when you, when you weigh those out, as the person who's supposed to, by the MPO bylaws, be the person to make that suggestion, you, you try to weigh that out the best you can, and you try to get, get the person that, not the person, but the person with the qualities that you want in there. And out of the people that kind of wanted to do that, I thought he was best qualified, in my opinion.
But there's no advertisement, that's been an advertisement anyway, so nobody would...
No, it hasn't been advertised right now. So, so there's a motion and a second.
Could, could we postpone it until we found out when the term is up?
That would be my suggestion. I, I would like to see, quite frankly, I'd like to see, I think it would, mainly because of sending the signals to, I mean, as, as Steve pointed out, Councilman McIntosh pointed out, you have a lot of other people who serve, I don't know about a lot, but you have some other people who serve outside of the town on our committees, is this signal to them is like, "Oh, as soon as somebody from Bonita wants my job, I'm going to get put off." So if, if that's the signal that gets sent out there, is that really what we want? Or should we just send it, well, you know, "When, when your tenure is up, every time your tenure is up, we're going to weigh whether or not we want you to continue or not." And in my opinion, I think that it's more professional to, when someone's tenure is up, to go ahead and weigh out whether you want somebody else on there. I mean, that, that's the way all of us are. Once, once our tenure's up, the, the public or whoever's responsible for putting you in that position, they weigh it out at that time. And I think that's the more responsible, respectful way to do it. Yes, I'm sorry.
I think Mike made a good point, and I would support that. If we could defer this at another time when we find out what the term limits are?
Okay, and, okay, we still have a motion and a, we still have a motion and a second on the table to, to replace Mr. Tryka and to, or to move...
I will withdraw that motion.
Okay, so the motion's withdrawn. And so, council, do you want to go ahead and find out when his term is up, and then bring this back at a, at a later, or the next possible meeting?
And I think we should send a letter, letting them know that there's somebody interested in serving from Bonita Springs.
Well, then, are we going to send all non-residents letters? Because I'm sure there are people who have applications in for other, other committees.
Whoever's stepped forward, Steve, and wanted to serve, yes, I think we should send letters.
I think that's a huge mistake.
Okay.
Okay, what was, so we're going to do that as part of this?
What we're doing.
Okay, okay. All right, well, let's, let's deal with this one issue right here, and then we'll, we'll follow it up. Right now, we want to go ahead, there's no, there's no, there's no motion, there's no motion necessary. We'll go ahead and gather some information. And we also need to get, we need, we need to hear from the, the MPO attorney on this too, to be sure that whatever procedure that the city council needs to follow is, is what we do.
Right.
Because there's no sense us flailing around there and, and, and making some list of demands that really don't mean anything.
I could add this also to the August, I'll get back with you on the August 6th, because I already said I would do some other stuff on MPO for August 6th.
Okay, good.
But let me make sure I understand. So in lieu of asking for removal, send a letter and request it now that we have a resident interested in the position, to see if Mr. Tryka is willing to allow the resident the opportunity to serve, and then also see if there are term limits as to the CAC.
Yeah, when, when his term is...
Is that a motion? I mean, has there been a motion made to send him a letter?
Well, there, there hasn't been a motion yet as to do that. I mean, that's what we're going to head towards here, but that's been the suggestion made. Discussion, do you, is there a motion? Do you want to make a motion to that effect?
No.
No? So is there a motion to that effect? Or do you just want to do the research? Let's do the research, let's find out when his term ends, and then we'll go from there.
Do the research first.
And let's, let's have some information at the August meeting.
And let, let's be in contact with the MPO and find out what the exact procedure is. Would that be okay? So the two things we're going to do is find out when his term ends, right? And then also, we're going to find out from the MPO what the exact procedure is, and, and how it may be in conflict with what, or, or in tune with what, what council's trying to accomplish. Okay? All right?
Sounds good.
Everything you have?
Yep.
Good, okay. Thank, thank you very much, council. Okay, now we have appointment of city council members to the Florida League of Cities Legislative Committees. That's green-shetted, but not under anyone's particular name. John, you got any, help me, help me, help me.
Actually, it's under my name.
Oh, that's yours?
Yeah.
Oh, it is.
Yeah, every year, we get contacted by the Florida League of Cities to see if there's any interest in one of the council members or all of you serving on some of their legislative committees. And there are five committees. There's the Energy, Environmental and Natural Resources Committee, the Finance, Taxation and Personnel Committee, the Growth Management and Economic Affairs Committee, the Transportation and Intergovernmental Relations Committee, and Urban Administration. So if any of you are interested, let me know. You can fill out one of the forms that's attached to the green sheet, and we'll send it off to the league.
Okay.
And then they do the actual appointment, but they're just trying to get a, an idea if any of you are interested in serving.
So in this case...
In this case...
Anybody, anybody who wants to serve on there will send that in, and then the league decides who will fill the space.
And if you would get your, the forms to me, and then I'll send them all in.
And, and by the way, it needs to be a council person?
A council person, yes.
Okay, just, just want to let everybody know.
Council members.
Yes.
Just by virtue of being incoming president for Florida Municipal Attorneys Association, I will be serving on the resolution committee. At the annual meeting.
Very nice, very nice. Okay, council, everyone understand?
Got it.
So if you, if you're desirous of doing that, please contact Diane. And when's the, when do we need to have that anyway?
The deadline is August 16th.
Okay, by August 16th, we've got a little time, but...
Have a little time.
Maybe just, just too much. I'm sorry. So anybody that wants to be involved with that, please, please do so. Now we're up to number, oh boy, I scribbled all over. Number C, appoint a city council member as the voting delegate.
And this is in conjunction with the Florida League of Cities Conference. It's going to be held August 14th through the 16th at the Weston Diplomat in Hollywood. So I don't know if, I believe Mike Gibson was interested in attending. I don't know if anyone else was interested in attending, but we do need to set forth who the voting delegate would be.
I'd like to nominate Mike Gibson as the voting delegate.
I'll second that.
Any, any discussion? Roll call.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Sackta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longkreis?
I guess it's a little late in the game, the, do you accept the nomination? It's a little late. Never mind, you're already it. Sorry. Well done, sir. And if there, let's see, let's go to mayor, councilmember, I, Stephen, do you have anything for us today?
Nothing new, new, thank you for those of you who are... Thank you for those of you who met the new principal of Estero High School. It's, he's the key to our future, future council people, future mayors, future hospital uh, he's the key to our future, future council people, future mayors, future hospital leader, so on. Thank you, he's a good guy, seventh-generation Floridian, knows the area, Florida, Florida graduate, Fort Myers High School graduate, good guy. He, um, I guess, uh, I guess I need to say this all the time now, I don't support flyover, ever have supported flyover, won't support flyover, I do support study, so take that for what you will. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And I'm going to switch it around and go to Bill. Bill, do you have anything for us today?
Yeah, I'd like to say something about, Dave Lovin was here last week, and, uh, we've had some situations with landscaping out in east of Bonita, and everything's been cut, it looks so beautiful, and, uh, it's, looks really nice, and all we got to do is take care of the property, the sixty-eight, the sixty-eight acres on the corner of Bonita Beach Road and Bonita Grande. Code enforcement also did a wonderful job next to our, the people we recognize from City Mattress, and they cleaned that up, so that looks good too. And so, uh, out east, it's, uh, and of course, construction's beginning out there with all the residential. Uh, unfortunately, we had that fire in Quail West, uh, thank God nobody was hurt, the fire department did a great job, and, uh, other than that, uh, everybody have a good day.
Thank you very much. And Janet?
Thank you. I've just got two things that are both informational items, um, from the Art and Public Places Board, and the first one is, is that they are working on producing, uh, two videos for the Chalk Where You Walk event, that's part of Celebrate Bonita, and the first one is going to be a small, short video to go out for potential sponsors, so that they can grow this event, and then the second one will be actually, uh, aimed at the schoolchildren, um, so that they can understand what putting a team together involves, and how much fun they can have going out and doing a mural. The other one is that the, uh, Bonita Springs Center for the Arts has applied for a grant, and I believe they're moving forward with this grant, but this will involve a partnership with the city. And the end project for this grant is that it is a pilot program of getting students and actual artists together to work, and then the, uh, end project would be a mural that the city would accept into the, into our downtown mural program. So it's a very exciting partnership, and, uh, the Art and Public Places Board, of course, solely endorses this too, so it's just, wanted to bring that information forward for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mike, what do you have for us?
Um, yeah, I'd like to thank Councilman McIntosh for, uh, welcoming the new principal of Estero High School. Um, I think it's very important to do, reach out into the community like that, and I appreciate that, and I'm sorry I wasn't able to make it, I previously gained instruments. Um, and I'd also like to thank everybody that, uh, helped out with the Fourth of July event. Um, it was a great event, everybody had fun, and, you know, it was spectacular. Um, and other than that, I'm looking forward to a short meeting, so that's it.
Thank you very much. Okay, councilman?
Uh, I diddle Mike, and Laura, thank you again for a wonderful July 4th, and city staff, just great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Peter?
Yeah, absolutely, great, Fourth of July, as always, Laura and everybody else that, uh, made that so wonderful. And, um, I've asked for an update, just, uh, for, for next month, um, in August, you know, last year's budget, we went through with the trees and beautification of the landscape, so we're going to be having a presentation, I guess if you will, and kind of an update on that, so looking forward to that, and looking forward to the, uh, budget workshop, and, uh, that's all.
Thank you very much. Uh, I just want to, one thing, I met with the hospital consultant, uh, who's involved with, uh, that Lee Memorial Health Systems has hired to figure out what kind of a concept will work there, something short of a, of a hospital with beds in it. Uh, they, they are going, he's playing that they are going to go ahead and meet with a lot of the shareholders here within Bonita Springs, he wanted to assure the people of Bonita Springs and North Naples that they were an important part of that process, it isn't about Estero, it's about the entire region there, uh, and that they're going to go ahead and include council, the board realtors, the chamber of commerce, a, a lot of the clubs, and their, their finding of, of fact of what's needed in the community, and, and as I put to him, I said, you know what, what we want them to be is successful, we don't want them to build a, uh, you know, a monument to, you know, whatever public opinion may fly by at that time, it needs to be something that'll work, that'll be useful, and that we can all be proud of. So I think that they've got the right consultant, and, uh, and we've, uh, both Carl, John and I have let them know that whenever they need us, we'll be there for them. So you may not see us, you know, opining in the paper about or anything like that, but we find that it's, that it's really the best strategy for us to have at this point, is to wait and see what they come up with, so far as the public comment and that type of thing, and then we can be supportive of that action when they need us, so. And with that, uh, that's all, and is there approval of minutes?
So move.
We have a motion?
Second.
A second, a motion and a second, approve the minutes? Any discussion? Rule call, please.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Sackta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longcart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Public comment, anyone who wants to speak this time, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Deborah McLean, I'm the publisher of The Banana Peel, and I wasn't going to come in today, I was just going to watch or even skip. However, I got a phone call from Bernice Romano, who resides in Lightner Creek, her place is adjacent to the park. At eight-thirty last night, there was a gang of men at the Cafe of Life Community Park that the city cosponsors and owns, and five squad cars came, and one man left in a squad car. At six-thirty AM, Bernice, in her bathrobe, which she told me was flowered, was walking the dog, and there was a man coming out of the bushes, getting in line for the Cafe of Life. At eight AM, there were a group of men gathering for the Cafe of Life, and this is precisely what we told you would happen with a soup kitchen, the neighborhood, and this is the downtime, wait till next season when they have their little Obama phones and they're texting each other, free food, and how to get there. I'm disappointed in those who voted for the Cafe of Life. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
John Calabria again, in the July 2nd meeting, there was discussion about the removal of the current MPO members. It was to be discussed at today's meeting, there was no discussion made at all. How can we get this on the, on the agenda? If not this meeting, the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. And Audrey, would you like to respond to that, please?
Yes, it was very clear, or I hoped it was clear at the July 2nd, I know evening meetings aren't always clear, where I made it ver, where I tried to make it clear, it[1603.11]